Also at the place that you check in.
Denise, Marge Grutzma is speechless. Mark it on your calendar. I'm speechless.
Is it kind of like in a loft, only a little bit different? Your bar is just to the side?
No, it's as you walk through, you know, directly and you'll be walking into the bar, bar lounge area.
There it's, I guess what I'm trying to say is it's sure not a new business model. From, from what I've seen.
Well Denise, let's take a walk through. I mean, I know you guys have been on this call for a long time and. I'm sure this wasn't the focus, but I'd love to have you walk through as soon as we can get you over.
Where's the other, where's the second bar?
Yeah, I don't, we don't really have a second bar.
Oh, so you're, you're applying, this is on a tangent, you're applying for a beer and wine license. For a bar that seats six people.
Correct.
It's in a lounge area. When we were in Kentucky, Denise, the hotel that we stayed in had something similar. You had your check-in person down on one end, on the other end was your bar, and then there's a huge lounge area with a. Fireplace and tables and things like that, you sit around and then you, one person goes up and gets you around the drinks and brings them back to your couch.
So are there going to be tables? You know, around the fireplace in that area?
More seating, yeah, there's seating, there are tables, there, yes.
Okay, so couches, lounge chairs, et cetera.
And, and when we were at that hotel, you could get like pre-made sandwiches and there was a microwave there or they would heat them for you. And then they just put that on your room tab.
Okay. Alright, well. Yeah, speechless, Marge.
It's actually very nice.
Yeah, nice has nothing to do with what my job is.
And Denise, we all feel you, but didn't we go through this same thing kind of with Goose and Twig? He's bringing it. Way before it got to that point with them. I mean, this isn't some of the after the fact things that have had to be policed. And I apologize, I never thought to look back at the plans from October, you know, back. Never crossed my mind. It, it, it seemed nice, you know, I.
Yep, that's the word of the hour, I think, nice. Like I said, I just wanted it to come back to Plan Commission, so that. You knew what was going on. And. If it's all okay with everybody, then we will get the updated drawings when it's completed and as built and then. Chris can go on the agenda for his beer and wine license next month. So for, there's, so this, so this bar is in like the second floor. Because you would enter back from the parking lot, right? Okay, so there's no bar on the first floor.
There's, there's no, we don't even fix, a fixed bar on the first floor, correct. There's a buffet down there. Not, you know, buffet table, I should say, like an open table with TVs down there. It's, it's a loungy sitting area down there. So we will serve, you know, we'll want to offer breakfast to our guests. Right now, we're doing a grab and go. Obviously, we're, we're, we're trying to get everyone out to, you know, frequent the seventeen bars and restaurants, you know, within a block and a half away. So, you know, but if somebody does want to have something, you know, to eat while they're here, or if it's in the off-season, there's really not much open. We do want to make sure that they, we can accommodate that and have an inviting space.
Okay, so does the, so when you're talking about a buffet table then on the ground floor that. You, you could have something catered in, you know, for breakfast or, or something of that nature. That people just serve themselves.
Well, we can't do that now, but yes.
But you can't do what now?
Well, sure, you can't serve yourself now, you know, with COVID, but.
Oh, right, right.
Uh, so yeah, we'll, you know, we have weddings, we have full buyouts, we have three full buyouts, so they'll do. You know, a morning brunch and assuming that's what, they'll do that in that lower level space. They need to have breakfast there, cater it in.
Okay.
In order to do that, you'd have to have, you have to have appropriate hand sinks, refrigeration. Mop sinks.
Right, but your prep, that your very small prep kitchen then is on the second floor. And most of what you're doing now is going to be on the ground floor.
Correct, so there's, there's two prep spaces where we have refrigeration and hand sinks.
What, oh, okay, I'm, I'm confused, where's, where's the? Where's the second?
Where it says, where it says GM office on the, the second page, second floor, two sixteen is the room number.
Yep.
We, we turned that into a, a prep room, just in case. Marge, what happened?
I'm just sitting here thinking, wow, how things changed.
Oh, yeah, and I, I find it odd that you wouldn't have something on the first floor that you're gonna have to move all that food from the second to the first. But I guess that's your problem. I'm not gonna talk about how. How poorly that's going to function. Okay. That's, um. That's all I wanted to clarify. One bar. Two prep kitchens. And we will get as built. Well, so if you, but if you have. If you have people coming in and doing things on the first floor and that's where your buffet table's going to be. Is that a space that's, that would be? Uh, rented, you know, for some kind of breakfast of some, you know, I know that you have said that you've booked out. Multiple weddings, you know, and all the rooms in the hotel are booked for that, so. If that's where food is going to be, does that mean that then portable bars come in onto, into the lower lobby for events of that nature?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so there is a second bar, it's just not there permanent, but you will utilize that space for those functions.
Correct.
Okay, Chris, you're giving me a headache. Okay, I'm going, I'm going to ask you, is there anything else that you want to tell us?
I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure what you, what you mean, what, what else, what, what else?
We don't want any more surprises.
Okay.
Because I feel like I've had to, to pull teeth to get, to get some of these answers, you know. We were first talking about a workroom, but now, you know, okay, that's a prep kitchen, okay. And there's a bar, okay, that's also reception, but oh, now all of a sudden, there's a second prep room. And oh, by the way, we're going to have portable bars in the lower lobby. So I'm just asking. Because I will come back to haunt you if there's some other change that you don't tell this Plan Commission right now.
Or again, I mean, that's, that's the business plan right now. I, I don't, you know, there's a fire pit in front, we talked about this, that's not on the plan. So we do have a space in the middle for a fire pit, for a gathering place. There's an open lawn in front. So, you know, if we moved a bar out there and, and, and served out there as well. But again, you know, the idea is to make sure people are comfortable here and they're enjoying, they're enjoying the village and are out. In downtown, parking their car here and not leaving to go somewhere else. So that's, that is our. It's been our goal day one, and we're making sure that when people are here, that they're enjoying themselves and have a comfortable place. It's accommodating. In the off-season, this is really one of our biggest pushes to, is to bring people in, bring in corporate events. And give them a space where they can have meetings, have a place to, you know, everyone's working remotely. So that, that is our, that is our plan.
So where, where is your meeting space?
We've offered. Either, it would be. You know, the wedding bar, the wedding bar is one, we've offered chap, lower level.
Oh, not in your building?
Oh yeah, I mean, really, we don't, you know, there's really not, I mean, on the third, fourth floor, we talked about maybe doing a wedding space, not a wedding space, excuse me, a meeting space. Uh, on the middle suite, we call it the door suite, uh, that would have some great views, but that would be a small, you know, gathering of maybe, you know. Ten, fifteen people. Lower level, you could do a small there, but it would have to go, mostly go off, off-site.
Okay, alright, because I'm like, we told you, you should have some kind of meeting conference space. And you wanted to add more rooms, so that's what I was trying to clarify. So you possibly can use one of the suites for small meeting rooms. And if, you know, the lobbies and the open area for other things, if people don't mind being disturbed with passerby's.
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
When can we get you in for a tour?
Uh, when I get the, a year from now, when I get the vaccine.
Okay, good.
I go nowhere, do nothing unless there's Plexiglas between me and other people.
Understood.
Okay, so if I put in here, it was the consensus that since state officials have determined that the restaurant certification regulations. Will be satisfied for the Door Hotel, the Plan Commission has determined that there will be a kitchen onsite.
No.
No?
No.
Not a kitchen, it's not a kitchen. It's, it's. It's, no, it's not a restaurant. It is. A food prep space is what I, I would call it. I don't know if anybody has anything else. Any other better determin-?
I'm just confused. I'm looking at our agenda. Is this to meet the requirements for restaurant certification? Or do you just require restaurant certification for what he is looking for? And Chris, my only question was, when you're talking about like these big gala events, you know. You're gonna have somebody like Pink Ribbon or somebody doing it, right? You're not having your staff do it, are you?
It'd be catered in, correct, yes.
I guess, I don't know what he needs, so I'm trying to figure it out. It says restaurants.
He doesn't need anything from, I pulled it from the board agenda. Because I knew the Plan Commission had not approved these spaces. So I wanted to bring it to Plan Commission because these were obvious changes. And just trying to keep the Plan Commission in the loop on the changes. That's all. It, it's all because of, of me and what we approved. And the, this was not on the original plans that we approved, therefore. I needed to let the Plan Commission know what was going on. So yes, we can make a motion, you know, that. You know, he has laid out, you know, these different areas. Um, in the motion, Janelle, I would also say that, you know, just to confirm that. These rooms will be relabeled and drawn when the village receives the as-built.
Chris, are you gonna, are you gonna be required to have a state certification, a yearly inspection of that kitchen?
Absolutely, yeah. So in order to serve any type of food, you have to get. You know, even though it is Denise food prep, it's called a restaurant license. And so once you are asking for that, you have to make sure you're meeting health code. Uh, so those are, that's the reason why it's called a restaurant's license application. It's not that we're running a restaurant, but that. We're serving food and to do that, you have to meet certain state qualifications.
Hey, thanks.
You want to read it, Janelle?
Yep, I'm still writing it. Okay, so what we've got is that since state officials have determined. That the restaurant certification regulations will be satisfied at the Door Hotel, the Plan Commission has determined. Um, that there will be a two food preps sites on, or two food prep areas onsite, right?
Yep.
Food prep, do you want to say rooms or it's spaces?
Uh, well, I think we should, one is room number two sixteen on the plan and I don't remember what the other number was.
Okay, so room two sixteen, which is the one that was the workroom?
No.
No, the other one was just workroom.
Okay, room two sixteen and.
Was the GM office.
And the, okay, GM office. Will now be utilized as food prep areas, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, food prep, whoops. Areas, okay, what else do you want to, do you want to mention the bar?
No.
Cause that's all you really care about is the restaurant aspect, right?
Yep.
Okay, so that since state officials have determined that the restaurant certification regulations will be satisfied at the Door Hotel. The Plan Commission has determined that room two sixteen and the GM office. That are depicted on the plans for that building will now be utilized as food prep areas.
Okay, no, room two sixteen is the GM office.
Oh, okay.
I'm trying to find where the other.
One, one seventeen.
Okay, and one seventeen, okay, slash workroom are now.
Okay.
Thank you, Chris.
So who wants to make and second that motion?
Believe it or not, I will.
Okay.
Motion by Berto.
I'll second it.
Second by Baker, any further discussion? All those in favor respond with an I. I.
I.
Posed.
I.
Carried. Okay.
You.
Thank you, Chris. It was a little painful, but we got through it. Okay, item number seven, God, is this meeting ever gonna end? Discussion regarding your request from Ben and Jackie Ailer to allow a change of use for unit thirty-four in the building located at one zero five six six. Country Walk Drive, the conversion of a nail, or excuse me, hair and nail salon to a floral shop. Motion by Berto, oh my God, it's the easiest thing we've done all night, is there?
Myself, I'm recusing myself.
Second.
Second by Bell. Any further discussion? All those in favor respond with an I.
I.
Posed, carried, look at, you waited all that time for thirty seconds. Congratulations, welcome to Sister Bay.
Thank you.
Okay, item number eight. Discussion regarding your request from the management of the boathouse on the bay, which business is located at one zero seven one six North Bay Shore Drive. To allow the addition of an awning with see-through side curtains that will extend across the entire front of the building. So I know Michael is on, is, um.
Yep.
Oh, Ryan Cross, Rian?
That's my daughter.
So we got, uh, we got a picture, is this, um. Is this a permanent awning or one that retracts and?
It's, it's a permanent, but it's something that we're gonna, so the roof is gonna have to come down every season. It's not gonna sustain the weight for the snow. So it'll be put up in the spring, taken down in the fall. The side curtains are gonna be clear icing glass and they're gonna be roll up. Um, so we have the opportunity to still open them up when we want to.
Okay. So, so they roll up then under the awning?
They roll up along the side of it. I, I, you know, like, I tried to get the guys, I don't know, are you guys gonna see this? And this is not exactly what it is. I just kind of searched the internet to kind of look for something that it would look like. Can you guys see that at all? And it's nowhere near.
Bring it closer.
Yeah, bring it closer. There you go.
It's nowhere near as big, but that'll show you how the side curtains roll up. And then roll down. So it's basically just attached to the fascia board of the building with aluminum. And then that, so that structure would stay up when they take the canvas down during the winter months. But we're now only gonna be open until the end of October and made through October, basically, so.
Oh, you're changing your whole business plan?
Well, we tried the, the November and December and it, uh, it just wasn't a winning proposition and it just made more sense. And especially with, with everything with COVID.
Right.
You know, everybody, their brother wants to eat outside, so we want to maximize that as much as possible. And allow people, you know, we don't have to contend with rain or inclement weather. If, uh, you know, all of a sudden you get twenty people sitting, or twenty tables out in that front patio and it starts raining, well, it's a mess.
I agree.
To, um, it's going to be the, even though it looks aqua on here, it's going to be the same color blue as all the other trim and what's on your sign.
Correct, it's gonna be, it's gonna be exactly the same color blue. We have a small awning above the bar upstairs on the deck, it's gonna match that awning.
Okay. And so. I think what's drawn on here, it's really hard to tell. Like every six feet, six or eight feet or ten feet or something, there's a column and that's, that's what.
That'd be the structure that supports it. I was kind of high, trying to highlight that. So we have that existing white railing on that upper patio as it is now. So the posts are gonna come down in line with those, um, so that they'll basically do the same. And the panels will split the gaps of the posts that are already there. So that, uh, we, we maximize the view. We don't want to obstruct the view as much as possible.
Okay, and so that's what would stay there year round?
Just the aluminum frame.
The aluminum frame, okay, so it's, so they're gray or are they white?
They're aluminum, so they're kind of a gray, aluminum color.
Okay. Well, you can have painted aluminum.
You could, but then you got maintenance, our railings are already starting to flake and peel and they're aluminum too and they're painted white, so it's probably best not to paint them.
Okay.
And while we're open, they're gonna be covered for the most part, because whenever we're gonna take the side curtains off, we're just gonna roll them up. So you're not even gonna see that structure unless you're inside.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions or comments?
Um, what color are the side curtains? Are they gray or are they blue?
Well, they're, so they, they have to do some framework in the color. They're gonna be clear icing glass throughout the whole thing. Um, but they have to frame them with the same color that the awning is gonna be in the blue that matches everything.
Sounds good.
Michael, you look way too comfortable in that chair.
I am.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
I can.
Motion by Berto, second by Bell, any further discussion? All those in favor respond with an I.
I.
Posed, carried. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Village zoning administrators report.
I'll make it quick. Pebble Beach is still on the consent agenda for the, uh, NRB, or the NRB board meeting tomorrow. I'm gonna be on that, it's at eleven AM. Um, so hopefully we'll have, you know, an answer on that moving forward. Past this, if it does get approved, there's a fourteen-day joint review board process. So it's still gonna be a little while, I anticipate mid-February, mid to end February, we'll have a final answer on that green.
Oh, can you just share with what the dollar amount is of that grant?
Um, off the top of my head, it was seven hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars and some change.
Okay.
That was the request amount.
Okay.
Um, moving on, uh, we've had one sign permit come in and a few others, uh, single-family home permits come in that have been reviewed. Um, Robert E. Lee has been contacted for the engineering study, for the engineering work on Bluff Side and Mill. This is gonna be more or less a Parks and Streets item to be discussed in the future, but I just want a Plan Commission to at least be aware, um, that we're.
Go into a little bit more detail of what that engineering is and this, um, the area that we're talking about this engineering to be done on.
Yep, so this is waterfront side of Mill Road, through the beach parking lots. And then coming all the way up to Bluff Side where the administration building is, all the way out to Highway forty-two again. There's significant drainage issues, uh, the road is in terrible condition. The sidewalk is almost non-existent on Bluff Side, it was there at one point, but it looks like it's completely decimated. There's a lot of stormwater systems that have to be reviewed and changed as we move forward. And we'll be looking into options for curb and gutter, but it, is, you are all aware in the summer months. Um, that is probably one of the busiest sections of Sister Bay with the beach and that parking lot. Um, and if you've ever driven through there after a rainstorm, you know that there's tons of standing water there. Um, so that's something that we do need to address and the first part of this process would be contacting our engineers to. Uh, begin to assemble, uh, you know, an engineering plan, uh, to move forward. So that's where we're starting on this one. Um, moving on, uh, Tim Halbrook Construction, I don't know if you've all seen it, but the garage's frames are up. And they're beginning to put the frame up on building number one. Um, they've had pretty fair weather this year to keep moving forward as the concrete slabs are in. Uh, plumbing is in and electrical is pretty much done. Um, so they're moving pretty quickly. Um, and then the WISA duplex, I know that they came to Plan Commission and asked for an extension, um, last year because of COVID and some, uh, materials. Uh, they have begun and they have rapidly, um, built, I would say that they're about eighty percent done on that, on that building there. So they've moved pretty quickly there.
Okay, item number ten, discussion regarding matters to be placed on a future agenda or referred to a committee official or employee.
Well, you've got the crane development. Anything else?
Don Cox. And then the driveway permit and the.
The development agreement that we missed this month?
Tapewatt.
Okay. Can we get an update on, um, the former Garrett project, what's going, in February? What's going on with Marissa's stuff?
I will, I will reach out to her and get an update for February.
Thank you.
Okay, so you've got Crane, Cox, Tapewatt Development Agreement, the Capomatio Public Hearing. And the Capomatio driveway permit request. Anything else? What was that that you referred to, Mary?
I'll put that in my admin report, that doesn't need to be an agenda item.
Okay.
What about that sub, that substandard lot?
Yep, that's, that's Cox.
That's.
Okay.
Okay, if that's it, um, after, um. Uh, because of, um, open record or open meetings, um, I would like to make a private statement. Statement to the Plan Commission, zero discussion after we adjourn. And, um, everybody gets off of, um. Uh, everybody else gets off of Zoom, if that's okay, to the Plan Commission?
Fine.
Fine. I move we adjourn.
Motion by Gritzmacher.
Okay.
Second by Baker, all those in favor respond with an I.
I.
Posed. Posed. Motion carried.